On.
Where you go?
Okay.
Yep, it's recording.
Alright, so at six o'clock, we will call the meeting to order. So can we do attendance?
Dave Pembel.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Brian Davis.
Yeah.
Becky Beisel.
Here.
Stephanie Mom here and Kelsey Waits.
Here. Alright, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Good luck Becky. Okay, do we have any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose same sign. Alright, motion carries. So first up on our docket is the approval of our minutes and so this is for our July 22nd regular board meeting, the August 10th special board meeting and the August 18th special board meeting.
So move.
Second.
Okay, and do we have any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, so all those in favor of approving the board minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose same sign. Alright, motion carries. So just a quick recognition of our visitors. Whoever is watching us on Facebook, thank you for tuning in and following along. And now let's head down to our good news items.
Fantastic. So I have two things I want to talk about tonight. One is I want to give a shout out to some of our teachers who have been recognized as this year's recipients of Adopt a Classroom Program, which is funded through a grant from the Ruth and George Daughffing Charitable Fund. So we have three from McCullough, we have Jane Fisher, Aleah Zuzik and Bree McNamara. We have three from Pinecrest, Tom Brenney, Tracy Runzway and Lena Mowen. And we have three from Kennedy, Jessica Niedermeyer, Kelly Holt and Emily Heiner. And so that folks at home know what this is, each of these teachers receives a thousand dollars, which goes into an account for them so they can buy supplies that they needed for their students. So congratulations to those folks for receiving that. And in other good news, also money related, we have qualified for just over a million dollars of Corona relief fund dollars. So those are coined CRF dollars if you see them in any of the news pieces. So we have started the process of transferring our expenses into that fund, which is a great thing for us. I believe that it was a million dollars and eighty-eight thousand, something like that. So just over a million. So that's great news. And the superintendents in Dakota County have been banding together to work with Dakota County in their, in terms of their dollars they receive from CARES. And it sounds like on September 1st, they're going to be taking up a potential motion to approve dollars to help support our childcare and technology needs for districts who are in Dakota County. So we might see some additional funding for those two purposes there, which is definitely needed. As we remember and the public remembers, we had to subsidize childcare in the spring because of the immense costs that goes along with that program. So cross your fingers for that one. But we're doing okay in our grant money right now and keep us, keep us in the, in the spot where we need to be as we have lots of expenses coming in right now. And that's what I have for good news.
That was great news. It's exciting to hear that we have some more relief fund dollars coming our way. So, and congratulations to the teachers who have their classrooms adopted. And that's also great and to the Daughffing Foundation. So. Alright, items for discussion. We'll begin with policies that we have a second reading on. The first one is one that we had taken up in the spring and then once COVID hit, it got kind of lost. And so we never officially approved the policy and so we're just bringing it back up. And these are the 200 policies here. So first up is the order of the regular school board meeting. And so any of these policies, since these are second readings, we can move to an action item later to approve. So. Alright, so are there any questions or comments about policy 203.2, Lisa?
Okay, I have a question about this policy and then about, kind of how it relates to the moving into an action item and approving, which I think is one of the other policies, like the policy about how to adopt policies. And I know we've read it before and I am very happy with the idea of consent agenda. My question is, the way consent agenda is identified in here, the way we currently practice doesn't align with the agenda, the general outline that's in there. So I just want to feel confident that the policy committee talked about that. And then I presume some things, because like right now agenda and minutes are at the beginning and construction modifications and personnel actions are commonly at the end of our meetings. And those are identified in the policy as potential consent agenda items. So my readers.
Okay, so you are looking at policy 203.6. Oh, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm looking sort of at both. I'm looking at that. This one, this is the layout of how the meeting would run. And, and I see this linked to the use of consent agenda and adoption of policies in this way. That the current practice in this, our current practice doesn't align hundred percent with the way it's laid out in the policy. And I know that we're sort of in interim, we've just recently started using consent agendas. So it's just maybe that's an observation. And I can say my discussion on the policy about policies, the 203.6. I, I don't know if it's because I read it closer or I read it differently, but it sounds, it reads to me like we can't approve it in the same time that we take the second set of comments that it has to be at a subsequent meeting, the word subsequent is used. So there seems to be a little conflict in that one. But to me, it kind of relates back to this. I don't want to get, I don't want to put a whole bunch of stuff down there if we're going to adopt a policy that doesn't quite align in a few minutes.
So, yep. So these are, so that's looking at all three of these policies essentially together. 203.2, 203.6 and 208. And so right now, I don't know if people actually follow along with the leader, but I'm currently looking at the 208, which is the development, adoption and implementation of policies. So.
In paragraph four A, it does say that approval may come following the second reading, but in four B, it calls for approval subsequent to meetings where public input is allowed. So public input is allowed at the second meeting with the second reading, which is now. And then in, in paragraph B, it says at subsequent meetings. So I don't know if that can be interpreted to mean subsequently later in the same meeting?
Superintendent McDowell, do you have any thoughts?
I am.
additions or policy committee?
Trying to pull up a copy of 208 that I can.
And it's loading really slowly.
Yeah, I'm having that problem too.
But I was.
What I'm reading here is that you're, you're correct that a subsequent meeting would be the meeting following. But I'm reading A and B as two separate items. So A being that after, like at the second reading, you can, you can adopt it. And then B would, it just, I'm not a big fan of how it's laid out, but I don't know how we could fix that because it does, I feel like B should actually come first, where it would be.
Because Stephanie, are you saying that B would only apply if there's input at the second reading?
So we do the first reading and that's where we and the public would have input. And then at the subsequent meeting, so the second reading, then we can adopt it. That's how I'm reading it.
I can see that. And I, and it didn't pop out to me at all the first time we read these. And then I read it the other day and I thought, okay, wait a minute.
Oh.
Yeah, so I would see it as that if we haven't had input or changes made during the second reading, that it can be adopted now and doesn't need to wait for the subsequent meeting.
I think the way that, what's confusing about it, the, to me, the, the piece that is the piece that is driving B is this idea that the subsequent, is the definition of the subsequent meeting. And the definition of the subsequent meeting is defining it as the meeting after the meetings at which a public, public input could be received. So if, as long as you have a meeting where you could have had public input about it, you can approve it at the next meeting, as long as it's the meeting following a meeting where public input was allowed. That's what is, that's what subsequent is defining.
Okay. Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Stephanie. It reads weird because it does say in A that you're going to put it on the agenda in two school board meetings. And that public comment will be allowed at both meetings. So that's up in paragraph A. So maybe it speaks to that point Kelsey made, which is if there is no input or grammatical correction input at that second reading, then, then the second meeting counts as the subsequent meeting.
Yeah, I think it's a both and, right? You can, as long, you can, you can have public input at both meetings. But if you've had one meeting, you can then also approve it at that second meeting, even if you had public input at the second meeting. You have to at least have one meeting that allows for potential public input.
Dave, I saw your hand up for a second.
In parliamentary procedure, the way I see it is, you know, you can bring it just as it was stated here just now. That if there is comment at the initial reading, then you're going to have a second reading at another meeting. But you can vote on it. If there are no comment, if there's not a comment, then it can be voted on at the second meeting.
Alright, does that seem to?
So my only concern is that if we've, you know, can gin up five minutes of conversation about this, maybe it's not as clear as it needs to be. Maybe 208 isn't as clear as it needs to be. But at the same time, is this straight MSBA policy? Do, does anybody on policy committee remember if this got modified?
No, we took this from, from MSBA.
Straight up.
We had gone through, I don't believe we made any changes. I can pull up MSBA's model policy.
Well, I mean, we have a long practice of, we didn't have this policy, right? To start with, we have a long practice of approving at our second reading if there's not a substantive change. That, that's been our, well before I was on the board practice. So I think that's, that's fine. And I am I going to vote against it because that? It's just struck me as odd.
So it is the MSBA policy on looks for 208, it's, it's almost verbatim.
Thanks Stephanie. Does that give you some comfort knowing it's MSBA's?
I don't know if comfort's the right term, but, but I, I believe what I'm comforted in is that our practice is sound. And maybe I should have a more strategic perspective on that and maybe I should have a more policy focused perspective. But, but my pragmatic comfort comes from, you know, we give two readings and, and I've never seen us force a policy through on a second reading if, if there's an actual discussion. So I'm comforted by that. You know, we can run this and if we bump into it in a couple of years, when it comes up for review again, great.
Yeah, it's just a quick tweak. Alright, so then I feel like we're kind of moving backwards in our discussion here, but I think we kind of needed to cover 208 first in our discussion in order to determine if we were moving these to action items. So going back to the order of the regular board meeting, so we can tackle kind of consent agenda on its own. If we look at 203.2 first, do you have changes or comments about just specifically the order of the meeting? And then next, we can talk about specifically what the consent agenda entails. Okay. So with no questions or comments on 203.2, do we have a motion to move it to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. Right, motion carries. So now we'll move to 203.6, which is the consent agendas. So Lisa, would you like to go back over your comments now, just to refresh everyone's?
My, my only comment, and I think it's observational, that comment, is that we've recently adopted, you know, recently in the last four months, maybe adopted the use of consent agenda, which I think is actually kind of cleans up our meetings and makes them more manageable. And, and in the previous policy and then in this one, really almost anything can be in consent agenda. Everything on that list could be in consent agenda. And so this is, this is not a policy thing, it's a practice thing, which is going forward, maybe we could use consent agendas even a bit more to kind of capture agendas and capture some of those things all in either in one chunk or at a beginning and an endpoint.
Okay. Yeah. Any other comments on this one? Anything that we see any needed changes? Otherwise, is there, Scott?
I'd, no, I don't see any changes. I was just going to agree with Lisa and reading it, it looks like we could put agenda approvals, minutes approvals and things such as that in there as well. And any individual board member can ask for something, be pulled out for individual consideration. So just another efficiency. So other, otherwise I think it looks, looks good to me.
Great. Do we have a motion to move it to action items then?
So move.
Second.
Alright, any more discussion? Right, all those in favor of moving policy 203.6 to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose, same thing. Right, motion carries. So we have policy 208, which we already discussed a bit, which is the development, adoption and implementation of policies. So do we have any more discussion on this? Or conversely, do we have a motion to move this policy to an action item for approval?
So move.
Second. So do we want to have any more discussion? Want to make sure Lisa has had her concerns addressed and that she feels comfortable with the policy too? Because it's easy enough to weigh down it as well.
Yeah, no, no, I'm comfortable that. I think our practice will continue. Everybody seems to be on the same page with how those two paragraphs read or what the intent is.
Okay, great. Alright, so all those in favor of also moving this to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. Alright, motion carries. Next up, policy 414, which is the mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse.
Move to action.
Second.
Alright, and do we have any more discussion on it? Alright, so all those in favor of moving policy 414 to an action item, say aye. Aye. Oppose same sign. Right, motion carries. Next up, policy 415, which is the mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults.
I move that we consider this as an action item.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of moving this to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. Alright, motion carries. So the last policy that's part of our second readings tonight is the COVID-19 face covering policy. And so I imagine we will be having discussion on this if there, yeah. How are we feeling? So we had a, pretty much a whole special session, special board meeting just for this discussion. Lisa?
Excuse me, I have a question. I saw that we did get some feedback from the attorney with questions from special services and I didn't see anything modified into the policy. And I just wanted to confirm that, that, see how our special services group was feeling about, about the policy. I certainly appreciated the, and the legal interpretation for those students.
Yeah, and Dave, if you could actually just go through for the community and kind of explain what, you know, was said to us, so that I know there's been some worries in the community about what this policy could mean for kids who do have special needs. So.
Sure. Yeah, thanks for having me on again tonight. Megan is here as well for us to be able to answer questions. And I think there were some board members at the work session who asked some questions for us to field at the work session. And we also then forwarded those same questions to our attorney that works with us on the special ed side of things, just to make sure that we are in alignment with what she was recommending for school districts. So to answer your first question, Lisa, she has not gotten back to us on the revision piece to the language, but she did say that her office is working on and recommending that there are some tweaks to the MSBA policy that you guys are looking at that she might recommend, but I have not received that revised language as of today for tonight's discussion. So take that for what it's worth on that end. She did however, answer quite a few questions in the legal document that Dr. McDowell shared with all of you and that Laura had shared with us. So mostly what we're talking about here is we are trying to, if I can encapsulate it in like one sentence, we're trying to make sure that students who cannot wear a mask, either due to a disability related reason or a medical reason, are able to have some, either relief from that policy because they, they cannot adhere to it. And we are going to work with those students on either some endurance in those areas if we can, or some tolerance or proactive behavior supports in those areas if we can. But at the same time, we're not going to harass or discriminate and keep them from having access to their education here in the district while mitigating still school safety for those who are still here. So we're trying to keep the school safety issue no bigger than it has to be while still allowing those students to have access. And so Laura went through quite a few questions and I think Lisa, you had asked some of those to go up there. And so that she, Laura was just responding to our questions and with recommendations for what she would say as a district. So she wants to make sure we're not discriminating and we're not disciplining unnecessarily in cases where we can't. Or, or in cases where the Department of Health or the Department of Education is highly discouraging us from doing so. And I think Dr. McDowell said a couple of board meetings ago, I mean, the reason they're saying they're highly discouraging us from doing that is that we could end up and will likely end up in some sort of court session if we are inappropriately applying this, this mandate where, with situations where we can't. So I guess that's the encapsulation of where we're at. And, and the language that Laura gave us. And I'm certainly here and Megan's here to answer any questions on the special ed side or of course Dr. McDowell in a broader context too.
So thank you Dave for getting that information back to us. It certainly did help settle my thinking a little bit and clarified some questions. I, I'm really torn on this policy. And for only this reason, that, that we don't have, that we've heard that there may be suggested language that, that puts this in a broader equity lens and assures that we as a district are keeping that as our strategic focus and that we don't see discrimination or inequitable practices against students that are in our special services group. And we know, we would expect that that's going to come. We also, you know, we're starting school. And I think it's important to articulate to the community what the, what the standard and just clarify that. So I'm really, I'm really torn about moving that forward. And I guess I, I don't, this is an opinion question, which is, do you feel like, Dave, that it's a good, it's a good practice to put this, move this policy to action and amend as necessary or as recommended later, or to hold off in general?
I might, I'll answer that, but I'm also going to defer to my boss, Dr. McDowell on this a little bit too, because you, I, I think with the way that he has led, I'm talking about Dr. McDowell right now, our leadership group, when it comes to the application of such a policy and practices, we are very clear as an admin group on how we plan to execute the, the language of this policy and, and enforce mask usage or face covering or shields or whatever we can do to, to mitigate risk while at the same time not allowing for discrimination or discipline that's unnecessary or any harassment where, where it shouldn't occur. So I, I can't imagine anybody from the admin side of things feeling as though that juxtaposition of issues is unclear at this point, given the direction that we've been given. And, and I think that we could probably carry that out. I, I regardless, policy or no policy, I think that's, that's going to be the way that we carry out the practice going into the fall.
And Brian, I saw your hand up for a second there. Did you have a question? You're muted.
Sorry, for some reason my alt A wasn't working, so I had to use my mouse. I have no idea what's going on here. Anyway. Dave, can you tell me what is it in the language that would lead you to think that somebody might leverage it to discriminate against a group that historically the faculty's never done that before? What is it in the language that makes you think they do it now?
Well, we, we haven't had such a, like a policy such like this before. I mean, we, we, we've got, we've got folks who are justifiably worried about safety issues coming into, into a school setting. And we have a mandate that's going to be difficult for every student to follow in some cases. I think we, I think at the work session, Brian, you brought up some good points about the fact that we, we have, we have students where it's going to be apparently obvious that we are, that there shouldn't be a reason that we are enforced or not enforcing a mask issue. There are students with disabilities that nobody would question when it comes to the, their, their, their challenges when it comes to wearing a mask. I think where we are maybe a little bit worried as, as a school district or as special administrators is where the disability is not so obvious. And, and it might, and it might appear as though the student is just being defiant or insubordinate for the sake of doing so. And that's where we have to make sure that we are not discriminating there either, because there are a lot of students and I would say the majority of which on, who are on IEPs, who don't have a disability that would be obvious. You don't know in a school who has an IEP unless you have a reason to know that they're on an IEP. And so we're, we're trying to make sure that we have systems in place by which teachers can follow up if they're, if they're not sure, so that we have a way to be able to follow up to find out if there is, you know, a mask exception in place, because they're not going to have something that they're necessarily, that's going to be necessarily obvious for that, for people to look at every day. But I think that's where, that's where I'm, that's where I'm worried as a special administrator, that we are maybe applying that in a case where someone doesn't intend to be discriminatory by what they're doing, but they just don't know what they don't know when it comes to a kid and how that might be disability related.
Okay, that's fair. So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, follow up.
Okay, so that's fair, Dave. So maybe what it is. I have no problem and I can't imagine if I have any problem deferring to your department. On that type of thing. I don't know if it's a clause. I don't know what it is because if if a student is certified. By your department as, look, they can't do this. I would think that that was something that would be accepted by faculty and staff. So maybe it's a matter of deferring to your department, like somebody, in other words, anybody who's going to be an exception to this rule has to come through you. If you if you know what I mean. So that we, because what we're obviously what we're not, we're not trying to. These are not the children that this should be impacting. I agree a hundred percent with you. We're talking about the kids that are just doing it for the sake of doing it and. They are, they are children that would not fall under your purview. If they're just being difficult to be difficult. And you would also know within your department if someone does have an IEP, for example, and I don't know how, just pick an IEP. Where it's something where there is something we are giving them special services for, however, they can wear a mask. There's something else they're getting services for, but they're then that your department obviously would know that. And it's kind of like I use my last example last meeting was. I think you guys would have been aware of these folks. They're not going to come out of the woodwork all of a sudden now this year. We would have been aware or we're learning now or in a developmental process now.
So just based on Facebook and other comments that I've heard from around that there are kids that we don't know. That don't have IEPs yet, but do have sensory issues that has not impacted them in school at this point, but a mask would be hugely impacting those sensory issues. And so just to clarify for those folks and those families. Who they should reach out to to discuss this policy, I think is important. And Dr. McDowell, I see.
Yeah, so I think. So a couple of things. I know that we have guidance on special ed. But special ed is not the only group of of children we're talking about here. We're talking about children that have medical things. From that standpoint. Secondly. We're kind of getting into the weeds of management here and we have systems in place, right? So I just bring us back to the board's goal, the board's conversation really is about. What? Do you want to have a policy around, which you should, around masks, around face coverings? The how we do that is really my role. And so I've tried to jump in front of that and we do have systems in place already of how we are going to in our infinite campus. Denote which kids. Have an exemption because again, the exemption might be special ed, it might be medical, it might be something else that's going on. But that at least will be at the teacher's fingertips. However, not every staff member has access to infinite campus. Your hall monitor does not have access to infinite campus, your cafeteria workers, your bus drivers. Those folks don't. So when we look at this from a systemic lens, we have to ensure that everybody in the system. Understands what are the parameters around when we're going to ask, even ask, call out a student. For not having a mask on, because if it were one of your students who had a. A reason, a justifiable exemption to not have a mask, it would be inappropriate. For the twelve people they pass in the hallway to ask them every time they pass them, where's your mask, where's your mask, where's your mask? Likewise, in a classroom, it would be inappropriate to be calling a kid out. In front of their peers for not having their mask. And so I bring all of those to light to suggest. We are in a really difficult situation with this thing. Because on the one hand, we're requiring that everyone wear a mask. However. We live in a day and age where we have to pay attention to the potential of discrimination based on something. And in this case, it's a mask thing. And so while we do need to protect our students and our staff. We also need to protect the individual rights. And so this is going to be a very tricky balance for us. And what I would share lastly is. We, we can't really even assume how this is going to go. We could get kids back in the building and not have a single issue. It, it, that could be, that could be the case. And at the same time, much like other discipline policies, we want to have something in writing in case we have to. But what we can't do is we can't be in a situation where we're turning a mask thing into an insubordination thing. And and have that situation going on. That can't happen. That that's not equitable, that's not frankly, it questions mark if it's even legal to do that. Now here's, here's where that sets off and I can't see Facebook right now, so maybe I'm I'm lighting up Facebook with this one. And that's fine. You know, we're going to have people, particularly our staff, that are really, really concerned. About having that one kid in their classroom that doesn't have a mask on. However. We also have systems in place to help deal with that. For example. In the legislature, kids K through eight automatically. So K through eight automatically can wear a face shield if they can't tolerate a mask. Right? If if they have this exemption, if you follow the way all the sequencing works. If they have a reason not to, they automatically get to wear a mask. There's nothing that is stopping us from working this through in nine twelve that way. In addition, in a video I'm going to share later, you're going to see an example of these portable tri-fold buried desk barriers, which is another way. Also, we have our six foot distancing that we're going to have. So. We we have several pieces and that's why I keep using the risk mitigation. You know, we have several things in place that it isn't just going to be. Thirteen kids sitting in a classroom and fourteen, the fourteen kid is sitting there without a mask and nothing else. It's going to be the exception. It's going to be the anomaly. It's going to be the piece that is either going through nursing, which is that is where all of this is going to go through first. It will go through the nursing office and then if it needs to go through special ed, it'll go through special ed. Because it might also be a five oh four accommodation that we have to do. So I hope that that helps explain it a little bit more, but this is, this is a navigation of. Of potentially two very polarizing points of view on this thing. And we have to be cognizant of that.
So to go back to Lisa's question, which had gone to Dave and Dave had deferred to you, we're following this whole trail here. How do you feel about? This policy and whether it's in a place where we can move it forward to action and make tweaks later? Or is this something that we need to wait for the lawyer and make those tweaks now? How are you feeling about this?
I feel good about the policy as written to be passed through, particularly because we have the subsequent document from Laura Booth. Right? So we have, right now, we have really good legal advice from both. Kevin Rupp, our general attorney and Laura Booth, our special ed attorney. And we might get further. Information from Laura and here, here's a perfect example of what we've been talking about with folks this week. We could go into next week and the week after, after schools are in session. And there might be even further guidance and all school districts are going to go back in and tweak their policies because of something that happened, some case law piece that came out. I think that's going to be our norm with these type of policies coming out. So I would recommend we get the policy in place. There's nothing in the policy that's going to get us into trouble. We've had. A couple of good, long discussions with all of our administrative team. I'm confident we're on the same page. So I don't see a problem with us pushing through with the policy.
Dave?
I hear what everybody's saying and and I'm thinking, you know. We started this with almost a full meeting discussion about the masks in the past. But realizing that we need to have something out there and let our administrators manage. This process. And so I would like to move this to an action item and I will make that a motion. Second.
All right, do we have any more discussion? On this before we move it to a vote? Lisa, how are you feeling? Okay. All right. So all those in favor of moving this to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Right, motion carries. All right, so then we will move into administrative reports. Beginning with superintendent and the building update.
All right, I'll go a superintendent report first and then we'll bring Jen Subard on. This week has been busy because we have all staff back. And so we're getting ready for next Monday and Tuesday, which is our connections week. We are excited to have offered Megan Miller. Megan Miller, sorry, the Director of Special Services. Upon contract agreement and board approval, Megan, Megan, I don't know why I'm doing that tonight. Will begin August first. So we want to congratulate Megan and we're looking forward to her moving into that position. We're really excited about that. Our fourteen day average for cases is just sitting right about twenty or a little bit over, so we are still on track. To start hybrid for the start of the school year. I see Scott has his hand up.
What is Megan's start date?
We're looking around October one as an official.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So again, we're still on track to start in a hybrid model. As of today, we have six teachers, seven paras and one custodian. And one individual contract worker that either can't return to work or have decided not to come back. So we're doing really well. With our staff, very dedicated and ready to come back. We have just over six hundred and eighty students enrolled in Hastings Online Academy. Hundred and four students in preschool and roughly a hundred and sixty students enrolled right now in childcare. So that is looking good. With regard to overall enrollment, because I know this has come up a couple of times since we've decided to go. In the direction we're going, our official count right now, since we have people back really taken stock in. In all of the numbers since October, or since August first, we have sixty eight new to district students. And we have sixty students requesting to enroll somewhere else. So we have a net gain of eight right now. With regard to that. And on a positive note, I know I spoke to a couple of people today where kindergarten is still, we're still gaining some kids in kindergarten. Particularly kindergartners that can do online. So that's pretty exciting for us. Along those lines, I am extremely happy to report that our union groups have been really collaborative through this process. We're in communication with them weekly, if not daily. And it's really been good to work through while we don't agree on everything, obviously. Just the collaborative nature of trying to get things figured out has really been great. And as you've seen in the news, we're in a, that's a great thing because it's not always like that. So I really appreciate that. With regard to the start of the school year, there is much more information on our website. If anybody has yet to check that out, go to the website and click on Bridge to Learning twenty twenty and there are. Hot link buttons there to get to all the different types of details going on. And people that have specific questions about the their students. Situation should be contacting their building principal first. Let them know what the question is and hopefully we'll have that figured out at the building level. And then with that, I'm going to try something new. We put together a safety and risk mitigation video. It'll be posted on our website. I'm going to try to play it through Zoom. I will let people know that what we learned is that the audio does, it's delayed from the lip sync, so. You'll have to mind that while you watch it via Zoom. It works fine when it's not on Zoom. But I'm wearing a mask quite a bit of time, so it won't matter. So give me a second. I'm going to set this up. It's a five minute video, but I want to share it with folks. So that everybody can see what we have going on with safety and risk mitigation. All right, and let me know if you can't hear it. Hi, everyone. I'm Bob McDowell and I'm proud to be the superintendent for Hastings Public Schools.
I can't.
I'd like to take a moment and share with you some of the items we have in place. To keep our students and staff safe and mitigate risk in our buildings. First, we have signage in all of our buildings. The first sign people will see will be a sign requiring face masks beyond the entry point of each building. The other thing you'll notice are signs that say, don't enter if you have a cough or a fever. As we move into buildings, you'll see reminders that we want to maintain social distance at a minimum of six feet apart from one another. And then as you enter into buildings, you will notice floor signs that direct people where to stand. And which direction they should walk, whether they're in the hallway, on stairs or in classrooms. Let's go look at our personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies. We have a variety of masks. In fact, we have over seventy thousand masks, as you can see in the boxes on the pallets here. And those masks come in child size or two versions of an adult size. And we know that we'll have situations where students won't have a mask with them. And so we have thousands of disposable masks. That we can give to students and to staff. In addition to that, every student and staff member will have the ability to store their mask if they need to. In a container during the day for times when they're eating or when they're outside and can maintain social distance. We know that we're going to have situations where students, for whatever reason, may not be able to wear a mask all the time. And so we have thousands of face shields that we'll be able to utilize in when situations require it. So that we can have touchless contact points in our media centers and for school lunches. We've ordered ID cards that have barcodes on them that each student will get so that a student won't have to punch in their number. Instead, we will just scan when we need to scan. Again, creating a contactless situation throughout the building. We have four pallets of gallon sized hand sanitizer. In addition to two variations of cleaners for our classroom that each staff member is getting. They will, one cleaner is for ten minutes, another cleaner is for sixty seconds. In addition to thousands and thousands of paper towels. For students who can't wear masks is we will have versions of desktop. Barriers so that when a student needs a barrier, we can set it on a desk and it's portable. We know that we have to clean our spaces and so we have a variation. Of tools to clean spaces. For small spaces or desks, we have battery powered sanitizer. That we will just spray on the desk and on chairs and on high touch surfaces to sanitize those spaces. For larger spaces, we have ordered larger devices. That come with extendable hoses so that we can clean spaces such as locker rooms, cafeterias. Common areas in an efficient manner. We often get questions about filtration in our buildings. And while each building in Hastings schools is different, there are two things we're doing to increase both filtration. And to increase the flow. The first is to replace all of the filters in the systems where they can be replaced. And the second is to monitor the electronics in our system so that the airflow in our buildings is flowing high at a higher rate than what it typically does. In addition to having students and staff wear masks, we're also putting an emphasis on social distancing, even in the classrooms. For example, even our rooms that do not have individual desks, we have marked desks with blue and gold stickers. So that class by class, a teacher can maintain social distancing for all of our students. We continue our safety and risk mitigation on our school buses. First, students will mask up before getting onto a bus. Immediately when students get onto a bus. They will use hand sanitizer and they will also use hand sanitizer as they leave the bus. In addition to that, our buses will have extra masks and extra face shields in case students should need to use them. Our bus drivers will have sanitizing wipes. Sanitizing spray and additional cleaning materials on every bus so that we can sanitize our buses in between routes. Will maintain social distancing as you see on this bus where students can sit alternating two students in one seat and one. In addition to that, our buses will have extra masks and extra face shields in case students should need to use them. Our bus drivers will have sanitizing wipes, sanitizing spray, and additional cleaning materials on every bus, so that we can sanitize our buses in between routes. We'll maintain social distancing, as you see on this bus, where students can sit alternating two students in one seat and one student in an additional seat. In addition to keeping social distancing on a bus, our buses will be labeled with red and green stickers on the dashboard, indicating whether or not a bus driver has cleaned a bus after a route. That way, we do not have students getting onto a bus that has not yet been disinfected. Thank you for taking a moment to watch this video and allowing us to share with you some of the things we are doing to mitigate risk and keep everyone as safe as possible. So we'll post that on our website and hopefully that'll help people understand what it's going to look like across the district.
When are you posting that?
I think it'll be up tonight or tomorrow. I know Hastings TV is going to be posting it on their website as well, from what I understand. So we're hoping that that'll help people just understand that we've got a lot in place and it's taken a lot. And thanks to Andy Lizer and Jen Reichel for helping me put that video together and for, to Cam Peterson and Jen Subert, who have been just ordering nonstop for safety supplies, so that. The only other thing I have for the board is just a reminder that our we're tentatively scheduled for retreat for October 2nd and 3rd and and the end of the month really marks the start for us in our budget adjustment planning for the 2020-21 school year. And more details will come on that as we get into some of the committee reports.
I just want to make clear that that tentativeness is depending on how Dave is recovering from his surgery. So if Dave is not going to be able to be there in person, then we'll look at at a different day.
Was that, I feel like that's the first time I've heard that. Did that come out in some other means, or is that the first we're hearing of those tentative dates?
They were one of two dates that we had put out earlier and everyone had responded to. And so because I need to lock in a place for us to meet at, I figured it would be good to just share that with everybody as a.
Okay, I was just making sure I didn't miss something. I was like, I don't think I hadn't heard back that that was for sure it, but now I know.
It's on tentative, but. People know.
Thanks for asking that question, Scott. I had the same response. I'm like, holy buckets, I gotta find my planner. The date's fabulous.
I just, I just switched my screen over to my calendar. I'm like, I don't see that on here. All right.
I apologize for the surprise, if it's a surprise.
But it's a tentative surprise.
I better be healthy.
So with that, unless there's any questions, that's what I have for superintendent's report.
Great. And then we'll move right into the bond summary.
Yep, we'll move into Jen and the bonds.
Okay, so the bond summary has been updated since our last facility committee meeting. And you can see that there's been some additional reallocation to new projects. Specifically, the high school bathrooms, the middle school bathrooms, the 300,000 towards technology. The, there's three items on there that I just have to be determined for the actual amounts, just because we're still kind of working through to get final numbers. But those would be the privacy showers in the PE complex at the high school and the athletic locker rooms, and then the Tilden piping project. We're still kind of waiting on some final numbers. In addition, we're continuing to evaluate if any of the projects that we had talked about would be appropriate under the CRF dollars. I think some of the drinking fountains, replacing those with the bottle fillers, that would be appropriate. So in those cases, I'll just make sure that I take care of moving, moving those items. So at this point, there's about 4.6 million up in that top category that's kind of available for reallocation. But we just know that there's those projects down at the bottom, yet the three that we're waiting for final amounts on. Any questions on that?
Thank you. And we'll go into the facility committee report basically next. So. All right, so moving on into committee report. So we'll actually start with facility, which is fantastic, since we were just talking about the bond. And so let me pull that up. So the facility committee met on August 3rd, and we discussed the showers in the high school locker room and increasing the number as recommended by the high school administration. And so those are the numbers we're still kind of waiting for there. We also discussed costs related to COVID. And so as Jen had mentioned, adding bottle fill stations to our water fountains is one of those things that long-term was kind of a good plan, but due to COVID, this is really kind of something we need to add now. And so also making sure that the water fountains are ADA compliant at the same time that we're adding these bottle fill stations. We were told that Dakota County is working on internet support to rural areas, which is great. And the facility committee and the school also set aside money for additional devices for our students in order to try to increase those hotspots and get them the internet that they need. For air filtration, I feel like I'm just kind of giving Bob's summary or Superintendent McDowell's summary from his wonderful video. But we will be adjusting our sequences in the air filtration in order to make improvements and overriding energy-saving measures to really just make sure that we're getting that air circulation that we can get out of our out of our systems, as well as the additional filters in those that we can replace. We did continue our discussion around space concerns and early childhood needs and how we need to continue having this discussion as far as trying to find a long-term solution for the district. We did get a price quote for what it would be if we wanted to add two rooms onto each elementary building in order to have the preschools be a part of the elementary buildings. And that was an incredible expense and was beyond what we have left in our bond dollars. So that was something important to bring up, and we will continue to have discussions on on the long-term solutions and regular check-ins to see what the plan will be. There's a needs analysis of the storage shed at the middle school being conducted, and a recommendation will be brought to the facilities committee, as well as parks and recs, in order to try to navigate that space there. And then along with the projects listed above, the facilities committee had also said we would move forward with a number of additional projects, including the privacy bathroom pair at the high school, privacy bathroom pair at the middle school, the privacy showers in the PE complex at the high school, as well as the athletic locker rooms at the high school and the Tilden South toilet plumbing. And the estimated total for all of these projects is about $2.3 million, and that's with using the, the high end of the range. Being more conservative with the estimate there. So does anyone, Dave or Lisa, do you have anything to add from our facilities meeting?
Oh, I think you covered most of it there, or all of it.
Okay, great. Scott?
Just a question on the air filtration piece. Is there anything that we need to do, or maybe this has already been done as kind of a preemptive check of the system, since we're going to be cranking them up? And, you know, essentially, like, I know in my house, my furnaces have a variable speed fan that I can leave on all the time. I'm assuming on a much larger scale, it's probably something like that, that we're doing with these other systems. And if that's the case, I'm, just to avoid a problem down the road, have we done any preseason checks or anything like that?
We absolutely have. So Cam's been going around with his maintenance team. So we have, we have a mechanical side of it, and then we have the computer side of it. So, you know, we, he's going through and checking that. We've already uncovered this week when we turned everything on in one of our buildings that we tripped, tripped something in the system. And so they needed to refix that in terms of what was, what was providing the output versus what was actually happening. And so they've been doing that. And then like I'd shared, they're also making sure that all of the ventilation is kicking on to the degree that it's supposed to. So yeah, they're.
Awesome.
One of their big projects in the last couple of weeks. Most of it, they've been waiting for.
Did we just?
We're losing Bob.
Bob, you muted for a second there.
Muted and is.
That was weird. My whole computer screen went black for a second, so.
It was at the same time I removed my headphones, so I thought it was.
Wow, that's a lot of control. The biggest thing that's been the holdup is waiting for those four-inch filters that you saw in the video to come in. But now that those are in, Cam's finished that, but yes, they are. Short answer is yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. And thanks to Cam and his team.
All right. Any other questions? Or we're in facilities? All right, so then we will move into admin negotiations. So Scott?
All right. Happy to report that we have reached a agreement with our administrators, and I believe it is later in the agenda today that we'll be asking for your approval of this. So the agreement as it stands right now is that for the 2020 to 2021 school year, they would have step movement and a 1.5% increase to the salary schedule. And then for the following year, which is 2021 to 2022, they would have step movement and a 1% increase to the salary schedule. Additionally, there were some cleanup items that we needed to do in the contract, one of them around bereavement leave. Adding in on uncle, stepchild to the list of immediate family, and I believe we removed some verbiage in there around superintendent approval and discretion. So I think there still is a piece in there about five prorated days for that. And then jury duty, again, we added some language in there. I'm sorry, on the bereavement leave, we took out all the verbiage for the superintendent discretion, and we made, we brought it in line with the other contracts that we have by adding the aunt, uncle and stepchild to the list of the immediate family. Apologies for that mix-up. On the jury duty, we added language in there again, so that if a, if a employee is called to serve on jury duty, or they're subpoenaed to appear in court due to or because of their position with the school district, they essentially remit their jury duty pay to the district, and the district gives them their regular pay. So again, fairly boilerplate type, type items there. So really good news and happy that we have this agreement in place.
Right. So do we have any questions on that one? All right, I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much for the summary, Scott. And then we will move into policy committee. So Stephanie?
Yeah, so with policy committee, we met on the 13th, and we, we already gave a pretty significant update because we had that, that special session on the 18th that covered the two main things that we, we wanted to, that we discussed from our policy committee meeting that was policy 710A, the transportation piece. And then we covered 808, which is the face coverings. So that, that very quick summary, that, that is exactly what we went through. And, and we had a special session that, that went over that quite a bit. And that's it.
I'll see if anyone has questions or comments, but I think we've covered them all either earlier today or or in last week's meeting. All right, so finance committee. Brian, you are muted in my screen.
He's driving me crazy. Okay.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
So there is an attached budget timeline, as you guys see, that Dr. Miguel put out for a timeline for us to start working on our budget adjustments. As you know, it's going to be a little bit of a daunting task. We know that we've got a 1.5 to 1.7 million dollar challenge that we're going to be addressing. We'll be calling on all our admins to help us with this as we walk through kind of a difficult process in walking through every piece of this and making sure that we stay fiscally solvent as humanly possible as we move forward in some of this challenge that we've had here in the past. But a while here. There, the timeframe is kind of aggressive, because as this goes on, it's going to become increasingly worse. So we know that we need to jump on it right now. We did receive 350,000 from the CARES Act. There is a wide use for those dollars. It's very broad. The deadline for the use of these is December 20th of 2022. It may be December 30th. That may be a misprint. Jen, you can correct me on that if I'm wrong. Also, this received 1.08, it's a little bit over a million, from the COVID relief fund. It's eligible for use for dollars, including operation students, family staff, family staff support, et cetera. The deadline for use on that, however, is the 31st of this year, which is a really short window. So Jen's working on how many things we've got out there that we can put against this relief fund, so that we make sure they were being efficient and using as much of this as humanly possible before the window closes up on us. Anybody else on the finance, can we feel free to chime in or Jen?
Good summary, Brian. I just want to step back to the budget adjustment timeline. The, it is important to, to make a decision and resolve, resolve that. It's, it's a requirement of our policy. Work towards resolution for 2021. The timeline, to me, sort of seems driven by two things. One, if there is going to be structural change that results in the way that registration looks different, that's part of why we have to be done, you know, in December, so that we can set up for registration in the following year. And then also, you know, I think the, a rule of thumb is commonly that if you have a deficit spend in one year, which is what we anticipate, that it would be a reasonable expectation that with unchanged practice, it would double in the, in the following year. So we're driven both on a shorter-term timeline around having clear and accurate registration, and then the fiscal responsibility piece of addressing the problem when it presents itself and not pushing it off down the road.
Yeah, thanks for that, Lisa. It's just important that we get on this. I mean, you've, you've spoken a number of times about how this thing just creates a multiplier effect, and that's why we want to so aggressively pursue that timeline that Dr. Miguel's laid out for us.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments for the finance committee? All right, seeing none. We can move into our action items for tonight, which begins with the consent agenda. And so the consent agenda has, and it bills payable, the personal report and a couple of change orders there. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Sacked it.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. So into items for individual action, we will begin with the CESO facilities contract. Right. So do we have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Right, motion carries. Next up is the principal's contract. So we already got a summary from Scott about this. Do we have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. All right, now we're headed back to the policies that we've moved to action items. So first up is policy 203.2. So first up is policy 203.2, the order of the regular school board meeting. So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
This one was the big one earlier, too. It was just all tied. Okay. Is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving policy 203.2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Alright, motion carries. Next up, policy 203.6, which is the consent agenda policy. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Alright, is there any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, policy 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Oppose, same sign? Alright, motion carries. Got a visitor. Alright, next up is policy 414, which is the mandated report of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. So do we have a motion? Okay.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, all those. Oh my goodness.
All those in favor.
The kid is super just breaking my concentration. All those in favor of approving policy 414, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Alright, motion carries. Thank you so much for the whisper over digital.
I'm sure no one heard it.
It doesn't really work, does it?
Right, no.
No one heard anything. Alright, next up is policy 415, the mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving policy 415, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Alright, motion carries. So the last policy we have for tonight is policy 808, the COVID-19 face covering policy. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Wow. Do we have a second? Alright, do we have any more discussion on this one? Alright, all those in favor of approving policy 808, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Alright, motion carries. So those are all of our action items, and so last up is just our future meetings. And so on September 9th, we have our special board work session, our school board work session. We are very special, but it's just a regular school board work session. And on September 23rd, we have our regular school board meeting. So.
And just to, in compliance with a, um, timeline that was laid out by the finance committee, we're going to see some activity in September. We just don't have dates on it.
Yep, and we'll have other committee meetings pop up as well in there, and those will all get posted to our website as well. And so for anyone who enjoys following along with the committee meetings, you can find those on our website on the school board page, so. Okay, so with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, and I hope you have a wonderful night.
Hey, Brian, just one.
Yeah.
Whoop, he's, oh, you're there. You just moved. Great idea.